Good evening. I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight for our town hall meeting. We have a great meeting planned this evening. Our panelists, Dr. Travis Gales, our county's health officer, and council member Evan Glass will each be providing brief updates, and then we will be taking your questions. If you'd like to submit a question, there is a Q and A box at the bottom of your screen, and we will try to get to as many of those as we possibly can before we wrap up. But without further ado, Dr. Gales, could you please give us a brief introduction?
Sure. Hi, my name is Travis Gales and I have the pleasure and privilege of serving as your health officer, pre-COVID and through COVID, and hopeful that the work that the team, which is way beyond me with many others, has resonated and kept you and your family safe at home and at work, and as you continue to move throughout our jurisdiction in the national capital region. I'm a pediatrician by training and specialize in adolescent medicine and young adult medicine, but I've been in public health for over 20 years now. So at any rate, happy to be here, and would you like for me to start with remarks now?
Well, we will get right back to that. I'm going to have council member Glass introduce himself and let us know all about what he's been up to.
Well, thank you very much, Susan, and thank you, Dr. Gales, for joining this conversation this evening. I'm really happy to be with all of you who are joining us. And I also want to give a special thanks to Doug Gaddis, who is the executive director of the Silver Spring Village for sponsoring this evening's town hall conversation. And for those of you who are not familiar with the villages, you know, they are a local volunteer-led grassroots organization that really aims to support community members who need to age in place and choose to age in place. And there are dozens of villages all throughout Montgomery County. So I encourage you, if you are interested in finding a community and finding some support as well, that you check out the villages, just Google them here in Montgomery County. And I'd also like to thank Odile Brunetto and her staff from the county's Department of Aging and Disability Services, as well as Robin Riley, who is the director of the Montgomery County Recreation Department, for their help in spreading the word about this evening's conversation. And as we are about to begin what I believe will be a very informative and very timely conversation, we want to hear from you as well about your thoughts and questions you might have specifically regarding COVID-19 and the measures that we're taking here in Montgomery County to ensure that every resident is safe and healthy in our community. And then the last thing I'll say is, a lot of people have been reaching out to me with questions about the upcoming election and how we are going to maintain a healthy and safe and free and fair election. And I will address some of those questions at the very end of our conversation. So in a little more than 60 or 70 minutes, we'll share some information about the upcoming election and how your vote will count on November 3rd or before that. So, and then last thing I'll say also is that in the chat box, in the chat box, we are going to be sharing a link where you can provide your information and we will follow up with you, my office will follow up with you and provide you all the resources, links to all the resources that we're talking about tonight, as well as answer any questions for you to follow up with. So I look forward to tonight's conversation and your future engagement.
Thank you, Councilmember Glass. Dr. Gales, can you give us a little bit of an update on what has been happening in the community over the past couple of months as far as our cases and where we stand percentage-wise? We know schools started this week, and of course, we had a big press conference today with the governor, with another announcement that sort of took us a little bit by surprise. Can you talk a little bit about those things and give us a status of where we are here in Montgomery County?
Sure. Well, as you know, we were hit pretty hard. We actually had the first cases, it seems like so long ago, but it was back, I'll never forget, at March 5th, on that Thursday evening at 6 o'clock, getting a call from then Deputy Secretary Phillips to say, "We have three cases in Montgomery County." There were the first three cases in Maryland and the first three cases actually in DC and Virginia as well. And since then, obviously, our numbers have grown and we were hit really hard, particularly in March, April, and May, and the numbers have trended downward. Now, part of the challenge and tricky thing is, we did see significant improvement for a while, and we did hold off on reopening. We waited a few weeks after the state moved forward because our numbers were higher, and we took a little bit more of a conservative route in comparison to the state. And in large part due to those measures and you all as residents of the county adhering to that guidance and putting forth and sticking to those policies, our numbers have improved where we now do have a lower test positivity rate and a lower per 100,000 cases per 100,000 residents than the state and many of our peer jurisdictions. Now, the tricky thing that I mentioned is, is that when we see numbers improve, there's a tendency, well, it's not really a tendency because we've not lived through this before, but there's the notion that we can, you know, it's time to rush and reopen really quickly. And the challenge is, as we've seen in other jurisdictions across the country, who have had comparably low rates or lower rates, when they've reopened without taking extra time for those numbers to come down, they've seen subsequent spikes. And so the work that we're trying to do again is to study those best practices and look at our data daily to assess how we need to move forward. Now, part of the other challenge is, as time has moved, the dynamics of the virus have changed. So early on, we were seeing older populations having higher amounts of cases, higher fatality rates. And we saw a lot of cases associated with congregate living situations such as nursing homes and assisted living facilities. Now, over time, those numbers have come down and the age distribution has changed. In fact, now we see a higher percentage of new cases skewed towards younger folks below the age of 30. And unfortunately, we're seeing, I think this morning, it was 21% of new cases in the age group of 0 to 19. So as the dynamics of the surveillance data changes, we are also being nimble in our response. We are working to make sure that we increase access to testing. And I recognize that the CDC did put out some guidance to suggest that asymptomatic folks don't need to be tested. We're not adhering to that guidance. We are continuing to improve and increase access to testing for all individuals because we recognize that from an EPI standpoint, it's important to identify cases as quickly as we can to remove those folks from potential networks of transmission. We also, in this pandemic, have identified, I have been reminded, that the very same things that have unfortunately caused increased transmission in certain communities, as well as increased fatality and increased morbidity associated with COVID-19, are the same things that were causing health disparities before. And it has reminded us that we need to continue to propose policies and put into place practices that address those social determinants and other factors such as racism, access to care, equity, housing, food security. All of those things have on health outcomes. Because until we solve those or have policies in place that address those, we're going to continue to unfortunately have the same conversations, whether we're talking about COVID, diabetes, heart disease, maternal and infant outcomes, et cetera. The last thing I want to emphasize is, we are working hard to, on the vaccine and immunization standpoint, the first component is to remind folks, particularly parents of young children, to get their vaccines up to date. It's really, really important. It's a fundamental part of medical practice and public health. The second component is, flu season is here. It's starting. It's coming. And we want to make sure, particularly this year, that we emphasize the need and the value of getting your flu shot. Because unfortunately, many of the symptoms of the flu mimic symptoms of COVID-19. And we want to make sure that we protect as many people as we can from the flu to mitigate any confusion when it comes to illnesses, particularly as things may open up and people are coming into contact with others more frequently. The last component is, we have already started discussing for a number of weeks now how to increase access to those two things that I just mentioned, but also potentially, when we get a good candidate for a vaccine, having a robust dissemination strategy in place to make sure that our residents have easy access to the vaccine. So again, that we can protect as many people as we can. I will stop there, but look forward to answering your questions and continuing the conversation.
Thank you. That was very informative. Councilmember Glass, do you have any updates at all from the council that you'd like to provide? I know Dr. Gales was talking a little bit about making sure that folks in the community have what they need. The council stood up a lot of grants to make sure that these communities were served. Maybe a little update on those?
Sure. Well, thank you for that, Susan. We've been hard at work, you know, at the council because the current statistics are quite startling. You know, according to the latest information I received just this morning, here in Montgomery County, during the course of this pandemic, we've had approximately 20,000 cases, 782 deaths, and 39 probable deaths. And that's just the recent information I received today. And so the impact that we have here in Montgomery County is real and we're feeling it. And it is because of that that we are doing everything we can to make sure that every resident feels safe and can be healthy here in our community. But unfortunately, we know that's not the case. We know that this pandemic has exacerbated and deepened the problems of inequity here in our community. And we know that people who are having trouble paying for basic expenses, as Dr. Gales, you know, alluded to, people who are having a problem purchasing food, facing food insecurity, or can't even afford to pay their rent and having housing insecurity. Those are two of the biggest issues that I hear about on a nearly daily basis. And so what we've been doing, my colleagues and I, are making sure that we have programs in place to help everybody with the needs they need right now. So as the council's point person on issues related to homelessness and vulnerable communities, it was earlier this year, this spring, which seems like a lifetime ago, where I led the council's effort to appropriate $2 million to help people pay their rent in emergency eviction and rental assistance program. And then in July, the council approved nearly $20 million to help with rental assistance. And that program will be coming online in the next week or so. And so again, if you know anybody who is in need of rental assistance, you can find the link in the comment section and sign up there and we'll provide that information to you. And here in Montgomery County, there are approximately 130,000 households that are renting from somebody or from some business. And so the COVID-19 Renter Relief Act, which the council unanimously supported a few months ago, also aims to help renters. And what we did in that case was limit the amount of rental increase that any one person can receive during this crisis. And that's the very first time here in Montgomery County we've ever applied any measure like that to limit rental increases. But we know that these are real problems that our neighbors are having. And towards that end, it has been so gratifying to see the number of organizations and the number of people who've been stepping up and helping those who are hardest hit by this pandemic. Over the last number of months, I've participated in a number of food distribution sites across the county, seeing groups of individuals, whether they are faith-based or other type of demographic-based groups coming together and just helping our neighbors, providing food or providing any other type of assistance. And it has been so incredibly humbling and gratifying to see our community come together with that. And then lastly, I'll say, is just a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of providing a council proclamation to an organization called Teens Helping Seniors. And this was an organization that was created and founded by two Montgomery County high school students who started providing grocery shopping needs for their grandparents. And then their grandparents said, "Well, we know other people who, because of their health, were concerned about going to the supermarket." And so these young people took it upon themselves to start this organization, and they are now doing shopping for so many people in our community. And what is most beautiful about this story is their movement got picked up by other teens in other cities across the country and even in Montreal, Canada. So there are now a few dozen teens helping seniors affiliates all across this country and Canada, where students are helping our neighbors in need and helping our seniors and veterans. There are 14 chapters across the country and in Montreal. And it started right here in Montgomery County. So not only are we doing everything we can to help everybody with all the different needs, but to see our young people stepping up and joining everybody else in making sure that we are in this together and that we do look out for each other. Because ultimately, I view government's role as being a safety net and catching people during their times of needs. And that is what has motivated me. And I am gratified to see that that is motivating so many other people because the need is real and it is right here in our own community.
Well, thank you very much. That was a lot of very great information, and I especially love the story about the teens. I think, you know, those moments of good are what we need right now. And that's what keeps us going and keeps us hopeful that we're going to see the light at the end of the tunnel. But those young men are certainly amazing, and I was happy to meet them and learn all about them. That was wonderful. So we have some questions that were sent in prior to tonight's meeting that we're going to get to first. Before we go to the audience, we do have some folks waiting with questions. The first one, Councilmember Glass, it seems that every week or so, there are new guidelines for what's open and what's closed. Can you provide us with a status update on the health and business regulations, which we know is changing by the second here?
Yeah, it is changing by the second, and I might ask for an assist from Dr. Gales at the end of this. But what I can share is that last week on October 24th, the council came back into session during August, an emergency session, to approve a health directive that Dr. Gales and the county executive issued to reflect the times that we're in and the ever-changing nature of this pandemic. And so in short, what the changes from the August 24th directive did was it allows a little more entertainment and arts focus for the community. It permits museums and art galleries to open with restrictions. And it also allows bowling alleys to open with restrictions. And that's probably a refrain you will continue hearing from me and Dr. Gales throughout the evening with restrictions. And it also clarifies that food service facilities, restaurants and other service businesses, that they post signs telling customers about face coverings. We have seen over the last number of months, a number of businesses, particularly restaurants, that flaunted the face coverings rule. And we stepped in as a county to say, "That is not the way we're going to conduct ourselves. We want everybody to be healthy and safe, and we want the employees to be healthy and safe, as well as the patrons." So that is really good. And then also, one of the other important things that I have received a lot of correspondence about is soccer. And what that health directive did was recognizing soccer as a medium-risk sport so that up to 50 people can attend a sporting event, be it soccer or something else, so that they'll be outside, wearing masks, but being outside where it is a little safer and we can resume some modicum of normalcy again. But Dr. Gales, I'll ask you for the assist if there's something else from that August 24th directive that you think is important.
I think that pretty much covers it. And the point I want to emphasize for folks at home to understand is that we look at a lot of different reports and data to come to those decisions. And so some of them may seem very easy to you, but they're not. So for example, when we talk about soccer, there is disagreement in terms of where it should be categorized. There's disagreement by the scholastic groups that rated the NCAA, the National Collegiate Athletic Association, or ALICs. So we try to, again, pull information from as many sources as we can to make those determinations. And again, everything is guided by the principle of where we can make provisions to allow it for activities to happen, but making sure that they have the provisions in place to keep people safe. Now, I think over time, there are going to be continued conversations. As Susan mentioned, the governor had a press conference today to talk about the state moving to phase three. We literally found that out with everyone else at 4:30. And so we've got to spend some time over the next couple of days looking at the provisions and looking at what our situation here in Montgomery County is to determine and decide what steps we need to take, if any, as part of that state order that was put out. Because local jurisdictions do remain the authority point when making those determinations for their respective jurisdictions.
Okay. The second question, "I haven't gotten a COVID test yet because I'm fearful of going out and interacting with others." I have two questions. Is it safe to meet with people outside even if you're wearing a mask? And where can I get tested for COVID, Dr. Gales?
Well, the second question is the easiest question. We have actually a pretty good network of testing opportunities that are county-led, that are part of the county COVID website. And in addition to that, our staff updates a list of community test sites and providers where you can get tested. And that is also a part of the county website. So I believe there are over, in addition to the county sites that are listed, there are over 50 different places throughout the county, different businesses and providers who are listed on that document where folks can go to get tested. So I would refer you to the county COVID site for that information. Now, for the first question, in terms of whether it's safe to go out and be around folks, this is a tricky question. Well, part of, the big question is, is making sure that you, when meeting with anyone outside of your household, is making sure that you stick to those provisions that we've talked about, wearing face coverings, maintaining physical distancing, and limiting any type of physical contact or exposure during that time period and in that space. It is preferred to have those interactions outside, outside of an enclosed space so that there is fresh air and there's open air for that. And so those are the guidelines that I would provide. Now, certainly, you have to think through those on your own. But it is a tough balance because we want to keep people safe, but we also recognize the value of connecting with other folks, particularly if you have been isolated by yourself or haven't been around others for that type of interaction. So it is something that I would encourage if you do it. Again, limit the number of folks you're around. Make sure you've got your face coverings and make sure that you keep that physical distance and limit physical contact when you do.
Back to the first part of your answer, when looking for information, the county does have a COVID website that has a lot of resources there and can get you almost, answers to almost any of the questions for resources. And I believe it's montgomerycountymd.gov/covid. And if you go to that particular address, there is a wealth of sources and information for you of where you can get the help or answer those questions. But the next question we have is, what is the county's plan to reopen more facilities like rec centers, libraries, and other places, Councilmember Glass?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And the county is working to ensure that all of our residents have all the resources that they need while also ensuring that our 10,000 county employees are also safe and healthy. And so that's the balance that we're just trying to strike. But, you know, there have been a number of departments that have been stepping up incredibly. And I just want to point two out for this conversation. One is the Montgomery County Public Libraries. They have moved to a virtual platform where they are offering books and magazines and movies, some of which are new as a result of this pandemic. So if you have not checked out Montgomery County Public Libraries' website in a while, I encourage you to do so. I also have their app downloaded on my phone so that I can read magazines and some books free of charge from Montgomery County Public Libraries. And they also have book collections so that you can order online, and then they'll have it dropped off in front of the library for you in a safe and contactless manner. So I think the libraries are doing a really outstanding job providing educational and informational resources for folks. And then also, the rec department has some really cool functions on their website as well. And one of their platforms is called the Virtual Rec Room. And on that rec room, in that rec room, they have free workouts that you can do, everything from yoga to actual physical workouts. And so I encourage you to check out those resources at Montgomery County Recreation Department webpage. And then lastly, there's a lot of food insecurity that's going on. And the Montgomery County Food Council has an online platform where if you need food or you know other people who are in need of food, they have this interactive map that tells you where food distribution sites are all throughout the county and in what days and times those are being conducted. So there are a number of resources that are available online to make up for the inability to meet physically. But again, the whole reason that we are not opening many of our facilities is because not only is it not healthy for us to congregate in large groups, but also we want to make sure that our hardworking staff and employees of Montgomery County are able to maintain their health and safety during this critical time.
Okay, great. A related question on county facilities, Dr. Gales, this will be for you this time. It's on the schools. Yesterday was the first day of school here in Montgomery County. And one resident here says she is a grandmother and is concerned about her grandchildren returning to school too soon. Could you address that? Where are we with that particular situation? If I'm not correct, virtual until January of next year?
For the current, for the public schools, they did make the decision to be virtual until January. However, with the caveat that they would revisit their decision at the end of the first quarter. And that was the policy that they had put into place this summer before the recent guidelines that were given by the state.
Okay, that's great. So we're just gonna play the waiting game and see how it goes. I think everything is going very smoothly, a few glitches on the first day, which was what to be expected, but everything seems to be doing great. And the next question, "As a senior citizen, what should I do to strengthen my immune system and general health to protect me from COVID? Should I avoid going to the doctor for minor issues?" Dr. Gales?
Well, my parents may not like this, but I would say they qualify for senior citizen status. And I would give you the same advice that I give them and do in our daily check-ins. As you mentioned, it's important to take care of your health in general. So the same things that I would tell you to do on a regular basis, making sure you get some type of exercise, you take your medications. And with your medications, don't wait until they're about to expire. Make sure that you call the refills in well in advance to make sure that they're delivered properly. You know, making sure that you have a good diet, that you're getting adequate rest, particularly now where the temperatures are a little high some days, making sure that you stay adequately hydrated. And those are the physical things that I would recommend that you do. So those are going to keep you strong to help whatever you're fighting and whatever condition you may have in addition to COVID. Now, there's other aspects of that. So for example, we talked about the mental health side of things. It's incredible, you know, what we've asked people to do with COVID-19 to keep you safe is to stay at home. And that decreases, you know, your interactions with family. And even when you do get together with family, you know, I tell my parents, I'm like, "Okay, I can't hug you. I'm fine, but I don't want to take that risk that, you know, and the 1% chance that something may happen that you may get sick." So coming up with some creative strategies to stay engaged with your family, whether that's through a virtual platform or, you know, having some type of in-person meetings, just making sure that you adhere to those physical distancing and face covering type precautions. So those are the things that I would recommend. And I would say, do not be afraid to go to your physician or your healthcare provider to seek services. Because even if it may start off as a minor problem, if you delay getting it addressed, it could snowball into something more serious.
Good advice, good advice. We have a question from Connie Rab, I believe that's how we pronounce her last name, for Dr. Gales. "Do you think that age alone is a risk factor for COVID-19 severity? Or is it just being both a senior and having chronic conditions?"
Well, I think, I mean, age certainly could be a factor. I think the largest factor is, you know, we've seen disproportionately high number of worse outcomes and more severe cases in folks with a high number of underlying medical conditions. And it's important to tease that out because in the very beginning, we were giving advice focused- we were giving advice focused on folks who were older saying, you know, we need to you all to stay at home because this is going to hit you harder. And as we found out, as the time has moved forward, we have seen young people also have severe outcomes. And so age can be a factor. But it's also in the context of, you know, your health status in general and and you know, that your predisposition or current status of having some of those other underlying medical conditions.
Okay, next question is for Dr. Gales. Please comment on physicians that wear a mask with a valve working very close to face and eyes. What is the risk to the patient?
Well, we've kind of, the the guidance has said that the masks with the valves aren't necessarily safe because if you open them up, they can expel. You know, they keep things bottled up, if you will, and covered, and then they can expel into the to the open. So the recommendation for, you know, healthcare providers, actually pretty much anyone, is that to choose another mask, particularly if you're going to be around other people, particularly within a space that's not respectful or even if you can't maintain that six foot physical distancing space.
Dory Hightower has a question, Dr. Gales, I heard that scammers are posing as contact tracers. How does a person know if someone might not be legit?
Well, typically the numbers will show up some type of government capacity. And so like a state of Maryland or a, you know, Montgomery County government number. Now, you're probably saying, well, I don't know the difference between those numbers, but there's usually an official number. And the person will usually identify themselves, say, hi, I'm calling from such and such with test results and need to have a, you know, a contact investigation type conversation. If you receive a call, well, first, first of all, you're receiving a call if you know you have a positive result. So if you've not taken a test or you had a negative result, that rules that out right there. And if you do have questions about a call you receive, you can always contact the local health department to report that information. You can contact the State Department of Health and report that information as well. And it's not only scammers related to that, I actually received an email from the state because someone from a lab had sent them a message saying, well, Dr. Gales approved me and told me I should follow up with you to have a conversation. And so the person at the state recognized this is this thing doesn't seem right and sent it to me and I was able to say, yeah, I've never, I don't know this person, I've never talked to this person. So unfortunately, there are a number of people out there who are taking advantage of the fact that we are in a pandemic and recognize that, recognizing that folks are in vulnerable situations. So that to say that if you have any questions about anything, you can always call us at the local health department to get more questions answered, two four zero seven 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 one seven five five.
Very good. And from Nancy, what measures are being taken to protect people who live in the big apartment buildings in Montgomery County? It seems that a lot of regulations are in place for retail and restaurants, but not so much for multi residential buildings. And along with that, who's enforcing the county's mask and disinfection guidelines in these buildings?
I can I can start with with the response, Nancy. I I've received a number of correspondence from folks like you who live in multifamily apartment buildings, some high rises, and have expressed some concern that their neighbors or that the facilities managers are not adhering to the same types of safety measures that we're requesting of other of other establishments, and you're right. And in looking into this, speaking with the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, there's one piece of reality that we just need to be mindful of is that these apartment buildings, in some cases they're rentals, in some case they're condos, they are private residences. And so the county is limited in so much as what we can do within the walls of someone's home or the building itself. And so what what I'd ask of you is if you have a particular concern with regard to your apartment building or you know of other people in your community or a neighbor who need some assistance or want some clarification, reach out to me. And I can inquire with that property manager and and also relay that information to the Department of Housing and Community Affairs. But there is a difference between a business establishment like a restaurant or retail and a residential establishment, which is essentially a private home. And that's why it might appear that some of the rules don't convey as nicely or appropriately as we would like. But I like picking up the phone and trying to implore people to do the right thing for the safety and health of their own residents. So please reach out to me and I'd love to help you.
Dr. Gales, did you have anything to add to that or did Councilmember Glass get it?
That was a home run answer.
All right, good. Our next question comes from Carol Nezzo. Is there an advantage for some of us to get the regular flu shot a bit later? So that a later formula may be more accurate for the time of getting the shot? Also, is it later, not now, that the flu shot will be more needed against the later flu characteristics?
So the without going into great detail, the flu shot each year is actually based upon the flu strains from the previous year. So it it basically what happens is is researchers look at the most predominant strains from the previous year to kind of guesstimate what is likely to impact society. And we do cheat a little bit. We also have some information from the Southern Hemisphere who has their flu season before us. And so we try to approximate the strands, different strands that are most likely to hit folks. So the the flu shot that's coming out is is has been put together based upon that. So I would encourage you, particularly if you are in an older age group and you do have other medical conditions, I would encourage you to get your flu shot as soon as as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, now is even a good time to get it, which is earlier than I've ever heard. So it might might be very helpful to the rest of us this fall. Our next question comes from Jen. Can someone please talk about how to get assistance with paying for a caretaker for the elderly, Councilmember Glass?
You're on mute.
You're still muted, Evan.
There we go, thank you. That that is an interesting question, Jen. I don't think I'd been asked of that specifically. And so what I will need to do is, as a member of the Health and Human Services Department Committee, we provide lots of assistance for those who are in need, including those with developmental disabilities. We do a lot, provide a lot of support for the for that community as well as others. And so please reach out to me and I'd I'd be interested to know what type of support you're you're in need of. And let's figure out how to to keep everybody safe. And, you know, all too often we we forget about the caretakers. And we need to make sure that those who are taking care of us are taking care of themselves. And so please reach out to my office, I'll put my information in the chat box and we'll try to provide as much help as I can.
Terrific. Our next question comes from Doug Gaddis from the Silver Spring Village. I just learned today that Metro Access's ability rides is no longer functioning. Is there something in the works to support the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities who need more flexibility than Metro Access can typically provide?
Well, so as a member of the Transportation Committee, I am in touch with Metro quite a lot. And so Doug, thank you for that question. This pandemic has severely reduced Metro Rail services, as we're all well aware. You know, there was a point in time where Metro Rail had essentially stopped along with Metro Bus and ride on buses as well. Now, the metro system is operating at a near normal capacity. And we're still trying to figure out how to make that work. And I believe one of the measures that was stopped in order to save some resources and make the system operational at a later point in time was the services that you were referring to. And so what I will do tomorrow morning, first thing, is contact Walmart and figure out when those services are going to resume because people are out and about, as we all know. And we need to make sure that those who have to get out of their homes and do so with the assistance of of the metro programs are able to do so. So Doug, I will follow up with you, I have your contact information. And hopefully I'll get you an answer soon. And if it needs a push from me and my office to resume those services, I'm happy to do that as well.
We have a follow up question from Doug for Dr. Gales on the flu shot for seniors. Were were should they get get it now or later, Dr. Gales? He wasn't sure the answer was specific to seniors, the one you gave previously.
You should get it now.
Now, yeah. And I see that you have the correct website up there for information regarding COVID resources here in Montgomery County. Montgomery County M D dot gov slash COVID nineteen. And you can find all sorts of great information on that webpage. Our next question comes from Brooke. She asks, can you tell us when senior centers might be able to open?
Well, I think that will continue to be influenced by, you know, our numbers and where we go. And so there's no hard or fast date to say here's where we are. I think, given, given the potential vulnerability of the population involved and the ease of spread in closer settings, we'd certainly want to see our community transmission levels decrease even more. We recognize there's significant value to those types of centers and activities and the services that they provide. But at this point, I think community transmission remains too high for us to open safely and feel confident that we can open without seeing potential outbreaks happen quickly.
I have a question for you, Dr. Gales, and we've talked about this before. You know, we are really encouraging folks to wear masks at all time, but we want to make sure that they're wearing them properly. I don't know if you have a mask handy or, yeah, or if you could just describe for us and give us a visual. Oh, here he comes and and show us exactly how a mask should be worn properly.
So ignore me putting my fingers on the front of the mask that was. So ideally, you should you should only touch the outside edges of the mask and not touch, because if you touch, you're breathing on the front of it, you touch, you put your fingers on it and you put your hands on something else and that can contaminate it. So what you want to do is, again, make sure that your hands are clean and put your mask on. And make sure that it is covering your nose and down. This, my mask happens to be a little small, but it's covering your nose and your mouth, that's the key. This is not how you wear a mask.
Right.
Even though everyone wants to wear the mask, you need to cover both your nose and your mouth and have it fitted on your chin to make sure that no secretions or particles come out from underneath when you're talking and breathing.
Has there been a determination about the bandanas and the gaiters? Are we trying to ask folks not to use those or to stick with the masks?
Yes, so we, the the there have been some recent studies that suggested that they are not effective at blocking particles from coming out. So we are encouraging folks to minimize use of those, particularly when you're around other people or in congregate situations where you're close to other people and it's tricky and difficult to maintain that physical distancing space.
Yeah, we have a question on here about the masks. And and Nancy says a lot of young people aren't wearing the masks in public, which is, you know, risky for our seniors. And what can be done to enforce this with with the folks who aren't wearing them? How do we handle that?
I think that's a very important question. You know, we're trying to enforce as much as we can with the staff that we have in terms of venues where, you know, people are congregating or in those spaces where they're not wearing their mask. And I think, you know, moving forward, you know, and this also is another area where if you see a high preponderance of folks in a particular setting, to let us know so that we, because we don't always know, unfortunately, we have to do a lot of reacting and investigating complaints. So if you do see that, if you see something, say something. You can call three one one or again, call our disease control line and lodge that complaint and we will actively go out to try to address it.
That's terrific.
And Susan, if if I could, I'll add to that. If you go to a restaurant and you see that the staff is not adhering to the the health regulations as well, please call three one one. That is largely how we've been finding out about the businesses that have been flagrantly, you know, defying the laws along with, you know, things, tweets and other types of social media, people have been sharing with me of patrons filming staff and and other restaurant goers as well. So please call three one one if you see something that needs the the county's attention.
Very good. Our next question is from Melissa Koppel, and she's wondering, when will the hospitals be able to open up to all visitors? Any idea?
You know, the the house, those are institutional decisions that they make, again, based upon the safety of the numbers and keeping their staff and their their residents safe. I know that nursing homes and assisted living facilities, for example, have rules that they have to attest by in terms of making sure that they have testing in place and that they don't have any active cases amongst their staff and their residents before they're allowed to reopen.
Okay. Another question from Doug, as the holidays approach, which hard to believe, they are going to be approaching Rosh Hashanah is later this month and then we'll be at Christmas and Thanksgiving before we know it. How can older adults minimize the risk in those intergenerational gatherings?
This one is yet another tricky one because the natural tendency is everyone, you know, when you're with your family, you want to hug everybody, particularly when your grandkids are there. And again, I'll use my parents as another example. You know, it's 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 hard to tell them you can't hug your grand, I mean, let alone your children, but we know grandchildren, they have that special place. But, you know, making sure that, you know, yes, gatherings can happen, but you've got to have parameters in place and spacing. So for now, and hopefully it won't be this way much longer, but for now, we're still asking people to, again, if you're going to do those gatherings with people who are outside of your household, make sure you've got your coverings, you're washing your hands, you've got your physical distancing in place and that you're limiting any type of physical contact when you come, when you're when you're in those settings with folks. And it's hard because you, it's family and you want to say, and it's people you know, and it's like, well, they're fine, I'm sure they're fine. You can't let down your guard, even when you're around your close family members. So I take precautions.
Roy is asking, he says he had an early flu shot last week and he's wondering if he should get a booster late winter.
I I well, I wouldn't recommend getting a booster per se, but what I would recommend is that making sure that you have all of your relevant age appropriate vaccines done. So, you know, for example, if you're at a certain age, you should also make sure that you have your pneumococcal vaccine, your singles vaccine, and, you know, all of those other things that are part of keeping your body safe and healthy.
Yeah, good advice. This is a question from Jen, I believe this is for Councilmember Glass. My father rents from H O C, he is eighty two and is scared to move because he's been there for thirty years. I have asked that H O C add two more railings on his staircase for safety. I've been asking for two years. Does Montgomery County have any laws in place to protect renters and give them a safe home?
Well, thank you for that question, Jen, and I'm I'm sorry to hear about the situation with your father. Though I am pleased to know that H O C and the county have been able to provide him with a home for thirty years so that he could stay here in Montgomery County. That is why we have the Housing Opportunities Commission, which is one of our major affordable housing arms here in the county so that people can continue to age in place and live in the county that we all love, regardless of of their income or wealth. With regard to to your question, please follow up with me so I can learn the specifics of where your father lives, which building and the parameters regarding the stairwell, or if it's an internal unit, having those those railings placed inside. But I am happy to to help you. I speak with the staff at H O C very frequently because affordable housing needs are incredible right now. And as I stated earlier in in this conversation, the county has appropriated twenty million dollars in rental assistance. And during the month of August, H O C had a rental assistance program as well. And so I've been having a number of people reaching out to me, asking for assistance. And so reach out to me, I'll put my my email in the chat box and I can learn more about where your father is living and the specific situation so that we can make sure that he ages in place safely in his his affordable housing unit.
Great. Dr. Gales, I have a question. We had, correct me if I'm wrong, ninety seven new cases today in Montgomery County, is that correct? Give us a perspective, well, looking at the last several weeks and and what we are, you know, aiming for here as far as that number goes and our percentages, are are we doing a good job? Are, are we doing a good job here?
Sorry, I was on mute. So we, we are. And our numbers have improved because again, point of reference, there were days where we were averaging over 300 cases a day. And, you know, now things have improved. One, you know, when you look at that, that raw number of, of, of cases reported, you know, how many tests is that out of? You know, what's the age breakdown in terms of what it looks like? What's the severity, you know, in that, in number of cases we have? What's the comparable, you know, how many deaths are we seeing? You know, what's our hospital utilization pattern and things like that to give us an indication about the severity of the cases that are happening? So we look at that number in context of all of those other measures. Now, 97 is still too high. I don't like it. Want to have it lower. And when we look at the definitions by CDC that define moderate transmission and low transmission, moderate transmission for us would be somewhere around 38 to 40 cases a day. Low transmission would be somewhere around 10 cases a day. I want us to get to the low transmission because when we can get to the low transmission, that means we're testing a lot of people. We're not finding a lot of cases. So test positivity is low. The actual number of cases is low. And then that means that when we find a case, we can identify them quickly and remove them from networks of transmission. It is not okay for us to be hanging out. I don't want us to get comfortable with the baseline of having 70 to 75 cases a day. No, that's not good enough. We need to see the numbers come down even more. And that is the constant balance that we have to face when making decisions about what should be open or what should not be open and what are the limits and what are the rules? Because we want to drive that number down. And as one of our advisors on our health, our public health advisory councils or group says, it's easy to get from 300 to 70, 50 to 70 cases a day. It's hard to drive it down even more. And that's what we're focused on is trying to drive the number down even more to get to that lower transmission level.
Well, we certainly, certainly appreciate all you've done and the way you've explained things to residents throughout this whole pandemic. Because I think you've, you have a wonderful demeanor and a great delivery to make us feel like we're safe and we're in good hands with you. So thank you very much for that. Councilmember Glass, quickly, what's coming down the pike with the council when they come back from recess? What are we doing and what can we look forward to from the nine members of the council?
Well, that is an open-ended question and I'm not quite sure how much time we have evening to get into all of it. And Dr. Gales is, is covering his ears. So the council currently is in recess and we will be coming back in, in two weeks. But as I mentioned, you know, we were in session last week dealing with the executive order to help reopen, start reopening more of Montgomery County. And so we are on call 24/7 to make sure that Montgomery County remains a healthy and safe place to live and where our economy can continue to be working, where our economy continue doing its business in a safe manner as well. And so there are no shortage of things coming down the pike, too many to, to list at this point. But one thing I will share with you that I know a lot of people are mindful of is there is an election that's coming down the pike. November 3rd is the national presidential election and we are getting ready for it here in Montgomery County. And I'm spending considerable time making sure that our election will be conducted in a free and fair way where every vote is counted and every vote can be cast in a safe manner as well. And towards that, what we are having here in Montgomery County, we will be having 11 early voting sites. Many of them are in public facilities which are currently closed, but will be, some of them are actually open for COVID testing. But they will be reopened for the election where it will be done safely. And then on election day as well, we're going to be having voting at every high school. And so every high school will be turned into an election day voting site where people can socially distance and will be spread out. And then at both of those sites, at the early voting sites and at the election day of voting sites, we are going to be having drop boxes. And the importance of those drop boxes is if you have requested a mail-in ballot, you can send it back into the United States Postal Service. But if you, like me, think that the USPS might not be running as smoothly and optimally as we had hoped or as it should run, you can easily take your ballot and drop it off in one of the drop boxes, contact free. And those boxes are going to be under surveillance by our Board of Elections and will also be counted, removed from the bins twice a day. So it is, it will be even more efficient than the United States Postal Service. And I guarantee, we guarantee that your vote will, will be counted. And last thing I will say is that there are a lot of things that are going to be on this ballot, from presidential campaign here in Maryland to congressional races to judges. But there are going to be four items that'll be particularly of interest regarding the future of Montgomery County here. There are going to be four ballot questions, A, B, C, and D. And as brief as I can, I'm going to share with you what those ballot measures are, why they should be important to you. And yes, I'll share with you my own thoughts on them. So question A is going to change the way that property taxes are assessed, limiting them to the weighted average tax rate on real property. It sounds confusing, but it is the way that so many other jurisdictions work. It is just not the way that we have done business here in Montgomery County. And there are so many different groups and organizations that are supporting this common sense property tax assessment, which is question A. Question B, quite frankly, is a draconian measure where property taxes would never change, even for inflation, which will mean real world, which will have real world effects here in Montgomery County, which would reduce vital services to health and human services programs, food programs, our schools. And so I don't think that we need to be taking draconian measures that no other jurisdiction I'm aware of has implemented. And so question B is bad. And, and I, I'm not supporting that in this upcoming election. Question C is about the makeup of the council, the county council, recognizing that the current structure where we have five districts and four at-large members, that system has not changed in 30 years, despite Montgomery County's population increasing by 50%. And so I and so many others think that it's time to update the county council structure, recognizing the incredible population increase that we've had by adding two district seats to the council, thereby having seven districts and four at-large members. And I think that's a common sense way so that we recognize the population increase and make sure that every resident continues to be able to vote for five members of the county council. And I'll share with you that, that there are a lot of organizations that are supporting that as well. And then the last question that will be on the ballot for the charter amendments is question D. And what question D would do is change the makeup of the council by eliminating the four at-large seats and replacing them with district seats. So therein you would have nine districts and no at-large. And on the face of it, it sounds like a sensible proposal, but what that would actually do is reduce the representation that you all have in Rockville. Right now you get to vote for a district member and four at-large members. And what this would do is reduce your representation to just one member of the council. And so there are a number of organizations and groups that have concern with that because they want to make sure that we have more representation in Rockville, not less. And so that is, as brief as I can, a rundown on the four ballot measures that will be on the ballot for November 3rd. And you can vote on those along with president and, and member of Congress and your judges by going in person to any of the voting sites and, or requesting your mail-in ballot, where then you can turn that in with, with the United States Postal Service, dropping it off in the bin or dropping it off at a drop box. The choice is yours. But that's what elections are all about, choices.
Very good. That was very comprehensive. And I know over the next several weeks that there will be lots of information that's circulated. So folks continue to understand what this is all about because it can be a little confusing. So we're going to make sure folks understand what they're voting for when they're out, they're voting. Dr. Gales, we are about out of time. Can you give us some closing thoughts of, of what we can look to at the future and how, how we can continue to get our numbers down here in Montgomery County?
Just continue to stay safe. Follow those orders. Again, resist the temptation to, you know, when numbers seem, you know, they're getting better, resist the temptation to let down your guard. We still gotta remain vigilant by that, you know, making sure we limit our exposures. We keep those face coverings on. We limit our physical contact and our physical distance as much as possible. And that's going to be, I think, you know, again, as we hit a period where, you know, we obviously want to see numbers get better. But we need folks to resist the temptation to the minute the numbers get better, you know, or there's like a two-day improvement to rush to reopen things because the laws of epidemiology and public health suggest that if we sustain, in order to sustain those gains, we have to be patient. So that's all we, I would say we would ask as we move forward. Get your flu shot and just keep holding on.
All very, very good advice. And what a great discussion tonight. Lots of great information, great questions from our audience. There were some questions we weren't able to get to, so you can send those into councilmember.glass@montgomerycountymd.gov. And his office or Evan himself will answer it and give you the resources that we've talked about tonight. So you can have those links as well. I want to thank everybody for being a part of this important discussion and have a good evening, everybody.